Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Weathersfield Board of Education. It's Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. We are in the Town Hall chambers. Alan, can we have roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mrs. Granato?
Present.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
Dr. Regan Lefevre?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chairperson, Mr. Cassio?
Hi, Alan, I'm present.
Chairperson, Mr. Carey?
Here.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Ryan Fazina. Did you get? Did I forget Matt? I'm sorry.
I don't know. She said me.
Oh, she did?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
I missed you. Sorry.
Okay. So, Mr. Fazina is not present. All, everyone else is present.
Thank you. If we could rise and have all the teachers in attendance read us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Emmett, student staff recognitions, presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. I would just like to say a heartfelt thank you to all of our math experts across the Weathersfield Public Schools for the work that they have done over the past year piloting math programs. And tonight, they'll be coming before you with a proposal, an action item, to select the new K-6 math curriculum for the Weathersfield Public Schools for next year. The amount of work and effort that has gone into this over the course of the past year is huge. And again, I think what I really liked seeing in getting out into the classrooms was seeing how much collaboration that you saw among the students. So, tonight, before you take action, there would be a presentation from the math committee talking about why the program that was chosen was chosen. So, again, just a shout out and a thank you for all of our teaching staff that were so instrumental in making this happen. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Board comment. Anyone in the board wishing to make comment? Ms. Granato?
Okay. Well, there was a combined budget presentation at the Town Council meeting on Monday, April 17th, and the school budget was presented by Michael Emmett, and the town budget was presented by our town manager, Fred Presley. Matt Lackavoli, our BOE member, who is like our data whiz, was at the meeting, and I believe he gives us a snapshot of how the town citizens believe their tax dollars should be spent. Ninety-two percent of the speakers were in favor of our Board of Ed budget, with some even asking for an increase. So, please, continue to speak to your Town Council people about your support for our students and schools. And a note of concern, Weathersfield is in a downward trend on money spent for education in comparing with our other towns in our DURG. So, please, use your voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. DeRoberts?
Yeah, a couple of things. I went to the career fair this morning, and it was just amazing, the number of businesses, trades, trade schools, colleges, public service careers, public safety careers, just really amazing. And it was, I was trying to see if there were special or different tables that the kids tended to cluster around, but it depended on when you were there. You know, they kept moving, but they definitely seemed interested. So, for everyone who was involved in organizing that, that was, it was really wonderful. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I attended the festival concerts, the choral and the band. And I expected to be blown away by the talent of our Weathersfield students, and I was not disappointed. The choral performers and the instrumentalists are, were a joy to listen to. I commend their hard work and dedication. The evenings were a success, in no small part because of our music staff. Their enthusiasm and commitment to the students, as well as to music, and to a high-quality level of mastery and performance, made us all proud. I also wanted to mention, from the class of 2008, my oldest daughter's class, a classmate passed away in October from a very rare form of cancer. They are having a walk, part, in help, organized in part by Mr. Sand, one of the teachers at the high school. And I'll just read from the flyer. On October 9th, 2022, we lost a Weathersfield High School and Quinnipiac grad Valerie Perrault to cancer. Val's love of the outdoors and her adventurous spirit were contagious to all around her. Help keep Val's memory alive by walking and donating to the Val Perrault Foundation. The walk is May 13th. They will gather at the high school pool entrance at 9:30. This year, it's pretty loose. They're just getting organized. And Mr. Sand was her favorite high school teacher. She remained friends with him after graduation. And with the guidance and help of Mr. Sand, the family has established a scholarship in Val's name. It is not based on academic achievement, but rather is for the student who embodies Val's adventurous, kind, and inclusive spirit, and her love of the outdoors. The first, this scholarship will be awarded at this year's awards night. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Ms., Dr. Regan Lefevre?
Thank you. I've always had a lot of respect for classroom teachers. I have even more, that I've had my first experience of coaching the Hanmer Running Club, 38 kids on a Friday afternoon. I just want to say so much respect, so much respect. My teacher voice was truly worn out by the end, but I did get to use my whistle, which is always fun. And I was also reminded in attending the PTO meeting for Hanmer recently, that the first week of May, I believe, is Screen Free Week. I was hearing on the, my drive home from work today, a report on NPR on some of the more recent literature showing that there really may be a causal link between the high levels of anxiety and depression amongst Generation Z, young people, and screen use, especially social media use. And many of you are nodding along. I say that for the people who are watching on TV. Many in the audience are nodding along. I think you've seen this firsthand as teachers. Some of us have seen it as parents or friends, but it is concerning. So, I know that there are some really good initiatives, like at Weathersfield High School, like when students enter the wellness room, that they put aside their phones, that they disengage from social media. But I know this is something my colleague, Matt Lackavoli, has brought up before. Maybe the board wants to think in the future about how we can better support students in putting down their phones and turning away from screens, probably as part of our wellness policies. So, just something to think about. Happy Screen Free Week, folks.
Thank you. Mr. Cassio?
Thank you, Chuck. I had the opportunity today to attend the high school career fair, and we were there as well last year. And we had a junior come to the booth, talk to us about career and funeral service. And she really, you know, was anxious and had a good motivating spirit behind her. And so, we asked the question, what is it that you, what's driving you? She said her grandfather had passed, and she really was mesmerized by the funeral director and their ability to cope with families in all different types of scenarios. So, we'd had a good conversation, gave her some literature. She followed up with the association on the Silasstein Highway, and we coupled her up with a shadow program at Farley Sullivan Funeral Home. She came to the booth today, all excited, and she has been accepted at Goodman University into the mortuary science program. So, there's a real success story that's happening at the high school. And this girl is smart, a go-getter, and she has no nonsense in the ability to try something out of the box, out of the profession. And so, the career fair is working, and there's a success story with that and the follow-through.
Thank you, Mr. Cassio. Mr. Riley?
On April 4th, I attended the orchestra and band performance, and Mr. Emmett was in attendance, so it was a, it was a very nice performance and a nice evening. On April 5th, I attended the SEPTO meeting that's recently been, you know, reformed. We discussed SEPTO board nominations, and there was a question and answer session with Mr. John Kazar, so that was, that was, that was a good presentation. On April 24th, I attended the Career Advisory Board. The career fair was today. There are mock interviews scheduled for May 23rd and 24th, and there will be a breakfast next month for, you know, companies and students. Today was the career fair. It was really a great day. I was, I was happy because last year, I was the only person there, so this year, I had someone from Human Resources and a, you know, a lineman and a lineman director, so I had more folks in attendance from my company. And it was, it was a great turnout. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Do we have a motion to approve the March 28th, 2023 board meeting?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
So noted.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make comment? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Public comment is closed. Communications, Mr. Emmett?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening again, everyone. Just want to give you some updates. As you heard from Mrs. Granato, we recently attended the townwide budget hearing that occurred last Monday. At this point in time, the town is working with departments and will be deliberating the budget with the idea of the budget allocation coming out no later than May 15th. We will be visiting with Town Council. I'm going to confirm this with Town Manager Presley tomorrow, on Monday, next Monday, at 6:00 PM. I understand that the council has some questions. In any event that I get the questions from council prior to that, I'll make sure I share them with you. But if you'd be able to attend, it's over in the fireside room at the Pittkin Community Center next Monday at 6:00 PM. So, we're looking to get the allocation by May 15th. You see tonight on the agenda, the annual process of non-renewals. I do want to reassure our staff that this is one thing that we do every year as a means of making sure that in the event our budget is significantly reduced, we have covered the, the process of non-renewal. So, we would avoid having to go to hearing on multiple people if we had to reduce force. I can tell you from history, I've been very fortunate in my time as superintendent, never having had to reduce classroom teachers. So, this is just a process that we go through on a yearly basis. What will happen next is upon your approval this evening, we would provide staff members with notification that non-renewals were acted upon by the board, and then we would wait for our budget allocation, at which point, we get an allocation that is sufficient and would not require us to reduce force. We would immediately, at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, or at a special board meeting, would vote to rescind the non-renewals and make sure that we get that message out to teachers ASAP. So, I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. I do want to let you know, in terms of reductions, I'm hopeful that we don't have to reduce anywhere. I think everything that you put forward, both myself as the superintendent and you as the board, are items that are truly needed, that are sorely needed. One of the things that we'll look at first and foremost, in the event we had to make any reduction, would be the new initiatives first. We've already prioritized the new positions. As you know, we've requested three new special education positions and two social workers. We have already prioritized where, where they would be and what, what would be the most important. We know full well that we need a math program. We've been very clear and transparent about that. Go Math is no more. They are no longer producing it, and it is, we are not even able to get materials for it anymore. So, that is a must-have. I think the other piece that we had in there was the technology to replace desktop units. That is another piece where that's kind of a must-have. We know from a cybersecurity standpoint, those are items that we need. And frankly, those of you that said that you went to festival, I went to festival also, and I can certainly justify spending $30,000 in the budget to get our kids some new instruments. Judging by the number of students that were present there across the district, and judging by the interest in both middle and high school and working with our elementary students, that was a sight to behold. So, I am certainly hopeful that the budget is passed as, as it was passed by you. Few other items for you this evening, just to make sure that you are aware. I want to give you an update with regard to COVID. We've had one case reported last week. We've thus far had one case reported this week. Right now, the State Department of Public Health still requires us to report cases. I did get note from Elda Marcelinas, our nursing supervisor, that the State Department of Education and Department of Public Health will be scheduling a meeting prior to the start of next school year, and they are calling it a post-COVID meeting. I like the sound of that. So, just to let everybody know, we are continuing to monitor. We still have test kits available that are still okay and have not reached their expiration date. So, if anybody needs them, just please see, see your school nurse. But, you know, we have not seen a large number of cases. We've come off the April vacation. I am hopeful we are getting to the point where we can put COVID pretty much in the rearview mirror. So, that's that piece. Several other items for you this evening. I mentioned already the K-6 math program. I do want to talk a little bit about the building project. Those of you that attended or watched the budget hearing last week, Matt, I appreciate your mathematician work there in terms of the support. One of the things that I noted in the multiple people that spoke was the need for those elementary schools to be done. In addition to that, you know, we did some work at a retreat earlier this year. We're talking about revamping and updating our strategic plan, and we have done outreach to our parent community, and we have heard it time and time again at the elementary level. Parents are talking about the need for schools to be renovated. So, this is something we're going to continue the work on. So, at this point in time, we have received two bids. We will be meeting myself, Mr. Kazak, our business manager, Chairman Carey, and Chair of the Finance Committee, Amanda Drew, next week to review these documents. And we will come before you on May 9th with a proposal to approve the construction consultant to continue this work. So, wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. We do have several items that we're dealing with right now. Want to make sure the public is aware of. We're doing some upgrades down at the softball field. We are going to be installing a new electric scoreboard. The trench has been dug for the new scoreboard, but the cable has not yet been put in. Physical Services asked us to be patient. I'm hopeful tomorrow during my weekly meeting with Mr. Salazar, I'll get a better idea of when that's going to happen. I do understand also that dugouts have been ordered for the softball teams down on the field, and those are on order, and we're waiting for those to come in. We also are dealing with some significant issues with the press box at Cottone Field. We had some significant rotting in the floor. Right now, at this point in time, the press box is closed. Provided in last week's Friday update, some photos. So, we've definitely got some repairs that need to be made there. At this point in time, electricity has been run. It is running over at the press box because we do live streams for our sporting events for our parents and the community. So, live streams are still happening, but access to the press box at this point in time is a no-go. I also want to make sure that I mentioned, I don't know if anybody's counting, but there are about 35 days left in the school year. Yeah, I see some, some teachers shaking heads back there. I thought so. I just want to make sure that I make everybody aware of the fact, May, which obviously, we start May next Monday, this month will go by very fast. There are a great deal of spring concerts, all kinds of events, many, many field trips. We are back to field trips across the district. So, the time will go fast. So, I do, you know, want to let our Class of 2023 know, savor the time. I know Ryan isn't here with us this evening, but it will come upon us quickly. This past weekend, we gathered at the green to see off the junior class, Class of 2024, as they embarked upon junior prom. Took place over at the Glastonbury Country Club. Seniors will gather at the green on Saturday, May 27th. That's senior prom this year. It's Memorial Day weekend. So, we've got a variety of other activities coming up. We have multiple award ceremonies. We will be getting into step-up ceremonies. June 14th will come very quickly. So, be prepared. Lots going on. Then I also want to make mention, also, multiple board members this evening made mention of the career fair. And as superintendent of schools, I can remember back when the idea of a career fair was nothing but a dream. It started over at the Stillman Building as a think tank with Mrs. Granato, board member at the time, Ken Lesser, and, you know, and some students who have since graduated. What we saw today was an opportunity where the community came into the building, and the kids had a great opportunity to connect with the community. I had the honor of speaking with the owner of the Charles this morning, and again, a little bit of anecdotal data. What I heard from the owner of the Charles was that he truly enjoys interviewing our Weathersfield High School students. They come with a cover letter. They come well dressed. They make good eye contact, and they make excellent employees. And I think to what we do with our mock interviews and all the work we've done with the Career Advisory Board. So, again, I'm very proud of our students, and it's just another example of the work that gets done in the Weathersfield Public Schools. And with that, that's communications this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to action items. Mr. Healy, I think you have a motion for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Action items seven, A, B, and C, I know Mr. Emmett's organized a very thorough briefing on the approval of the new K-6 math program, illustrative mathematics, excuse me, illustrative mathematics, Imagine Learning, 2021.
Do we?
Second. Yeah, okay. Now, we're on.
Discussion.
Let it rip.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Emmett, discussion?
Yes, at this point in time, if I could have the math committee come forward, we've
Good evening. Members of the board, Mr. Emmett, thanks for having us. I am very excited to share with you tonight a few of our members from our Math Adoption Committee from this year. We had over 20 members. We had 14 classroom teachers, our entire math intervention team, and our curriculum specialist, along with special education teacher, an English learner teacher, all of our principals involved in this process. Tonight with me, I have Eric Dean, grade two teacher from Charles Wright, Nicole Antonelli, grade four at Charles Wright, Melissa Johnston, DeeDee Mahoney, Mike Macaluso, and Amy Carlson are all math interventionists, and Annie Kuhn, who is a curriculum specialist at Webb. All of these people were critical in this process, and they put in a ton of work this year, as did our students in these classrooms. They have done amazing things, and we are really excited to present to you why we've chosen illustrative mathematics as our recommended core curriculum resource for K-6. I'm going to let Annie tell you about our process.
Good evening. So, our committee first met in June of 2022, last summer, and we took our district vision and mission, which you see up here, as well as our vision of a graduate, to really ground our work together and move us forward, and knowing what our most important principles were. The committee considered the characteristics that were identified in the vision of a graduate as pillars to lead our search for material that would foster these qualities in all of our students from kindergarten on. The characteristics that really stood out to us were engagement, curiosity, collaboration, discourse and communication, critical thinking, confidence, flexibility, and problem solving. So, we then created a shared vision of math instruction that anchored our process for choosing the right resource for us and our students. So, that vision is what you see here. I don't usually read slides word for word, but I think this is really important. Our vision is that we believe that high-quality elementary math instruction fosters students' deep, flexible understanding of numbers, data, and space, and how they work through hands-on learning experiences and mathematical discourse. It challenges students to engage in authentic learning experiences that allow them to make sense of and solve real-world problems, make conjectures, develop mathematical arguments, revise their thinking, and arguments based on feedback from their peers and the teacher, and consider themselves to be mathematicians. So, we use this vision, again, to drive all of our work going forward. So, once we had this vision, we were tasked with looking at different programs. We started with the seven that you see up here. We used an evaluation tool called the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool, also known as the IMET, and the math curriculum team started by evaluating all of these seven programs with the IMET in order to narrow them down, and we narrowed our choices down to four. So, these were the four that we brought to the wider committee. After we narrowed our choices to four, we heard from representatives from each of these publishers. They came and they gave presentations about their programs, and then using our own rubric, each math committee member ranked the programs in a variety of areas. And then we were able to narrow it down to two, which are the two that we chose to pilot, illustrative mathematics and iReady classroom mathematics. Going forward from there, two teachers at each grade level from our committee were able to pilot both programs. So, we had two teachers per grade. We piloted two to three units per grade level. So, we started the year with illustrative. We, each teacher piloted a few units, and then each teacher also switched to iReady and piloted a further few units. We met monthly as a committee. We shared feedback. We gathered evidence. We were talking about how effective the programs were with our students. We also met individually within our schools to plan instruction, to learn how to use the materials, to think about what data that was producing. And then we spent four and a half days working together as a whole committee on a variety of topics related to the pilot and to math instruction. In March, we came together to select the material that we would be recommending to you tonight. We all discussed the pros and cons of both materials, and when we brought it back to that vision that we created, we found that there really was one program that stood out, and that was illustrative mathematics.
Good evening. What do we value? Two of the areas that we considered when looking at a new math resource were problem-solving and critical thinking. These includes, this includes students engaging in productive struggle to help with perseverance, tasks that are embedded in real-world context so students can see how math applies to their lives outside of the classroom, students reflecting on their process both independently and collaboratively, using authentic problems with multiple entry points so that students, all students can participate in the learning. It promotes thinking versus mimicking, so students are not simply copying the behaviors that they think a learner should look like. It builds number sense and number relationships, and students are the ones driving the learning while teachers act as a guide or facilitator for that learning. Another framework that we have begun to implement revolves around the book Building Thinking Classrooms by Peter Lilidahl, which Melissa will be mentioning in a little while. In this book, he states, "Good problem-solving tasks require students to get stuck and to think and experiment, to try and to fail, and to apply their knowledge in novel ways in order to get unstuck." The work that we have done surrounding Building Thinking Classrooms and the illustrative mathematics pilot has helped students to think, build upon, build upon, and apply their knowledge to the point where students make connections, feel successful, and feel accomplished. One second grader from one of our math pilot classrooms recently commented, "I like the practice problems. They are challenging, and they are also fun." Fortunately, the opportunities allotted for problem-solving and critical thinking were not the only strengths found in the illustrative mathematics resource, as my colleague, Melissa Johnston, will tell you more about now.
Another important
Another important aspect of illustrative is the inquiry and constructive nature of the lesson sequences. If anyone's not familiar with the constructivist theory of education, it states that students actively construct or make their own knowledge. Essentially, learners use their previous knowledge as a foundation, and they build upon it with new things that they learn. So, everyone's individual experiences make their learning unique to them. The problem-based approach of this resource allows for access to all students. It develops mathematical concepts over time, and students are seeing and using patterns and relationships, which is central to their learning. It follows the you-do, we-do, I-do lesson structure, which is typical, it's a flipped of what the typical gradual release of responsibility model follows, which allows for them to have more productive struggle. The theory is that if a student works through the steps on their own, then they have a higher likelihood of retaining the information than if they're simply given steps to follow. This focus shift in the process over product leads students to recognize that answers are important, but they are not the math. As Mike mentioned previously, our pilot teachers work to build their teaching practices through the application of methods learned while reading the book Building Thinking Classrooms. The combination of those teaching practices and the illustrative mathematics resource has transformed what our math classrooms look like. The students are out of their seats. They're working as a team to solve complex problems, and the quality of discourse in the room allows the teachers to assess student understanding.
One of the ways that our classrooms have been transformed, as Melissa said, is through discourse and collaboration. Discourse, which we also call purposeful talk, is valuable, especially when everyone involved is thoroughly engaged, which on the student's side now looks like talk-around thinking, critiquing others, their knowledge, their struggles, and their successes, while on the teaching side, as Mike mentioned, it sounds a lot more like facilitation instead of order-giving and step-making. It provides support for productive struggle and for the solidification of conceptual development. Here's a great example from one of our third-grade pilot classrooms, where students are solidifying their learning as they talk and collaborate to understand a different student's work. Take a moment to analyze Aria's work.
We did, we did four boxes, because the question was how many rounds, and she had four weeks, and I'm.
Sorry. It'll be a little easier if it goes.
Five, you go with five things.
When I can tell you that this whole discussion happened because the young lady sitting on the side asked a question about how she solved her book. Her board is showing the work that she did, and the other students in the room are trying to make sense out of how she did this. They'll ask a clarifying question, and the student.
Aria, I'm gonna let somebody else try to explain to Taylor what those four big boxes might represent, and why there are five smaller boxes in each big box.
The student takes over to further the explanation, because the person holding the paper never talks about how she did her work. The other students make sense of it. She knows what she did. We want to know if they understand the concept. So, this student goes on to elaborate what she did, and you'll see at the end how the student who asked the original question reacts. Everybody's listening to his explanation. They're actually talking about days of the week, and the four boxes are months, or weeks and a month.
And then you put three in each box for three miles.
See, and she nods. Yeah.
Taylor, is that like an aha face?
I see now.
You see now?
She's like, "I get it now." The teacher never told her what she was supposed to get. She figured it out on her own, which is kind of brilliant. And to follow her aha, solidified knowledge moment, we have another clip from one of our fourth-grade classrooms, where partners are trying strategy. They, they have an idea. They start the strategy, and they continue, and they see it all come together to solve a missing add-end problem.
Is that 7,000?
Plus 3,000. So, then it would be, and then 579 plus 3,000.
3,000. So, we add, so 7,000 plus 3,000 would equal 10,000.
Yeah.
So, and then 3,000 plus 579 would equal 2,000.
Notice the other student's watching. Is he doing, does it making sense what he's putting together?
Now, when was the last time a math problem made you want to hug somebody, right? And so, this is what's happening in our classrooms. Kids are coming up with these ideas, trying them on their own, instead of us saying, "Here's how you do it. Now you go try it." They're building, they're constructing this knowledge on their own. While this isn't a daily reaction, we don't have kids hugging each other every day in math, math has looked and sounded very different in all of our pilot classrooms, and quite honestly, it's really exciting. My colleagues, Eric and Nicole from Charles Wright, are both pilot teachers, and they have some experience in bringing this discourse to life, and I'm gonna let you hear from them.
Good evening. In my second-grade classroom, we quickly realized how high the expectations were for the students to engage in discourse and collaborate with their peers. The illustrative materials, they're designed to have group and partner work within every lesson, and within the two or three activities in each lesson, the students are expected to be able to explain their thinking to their partner, as well as give feedback and critique. It's a big ask for seven or eight-year-olds, or so I thought. We spent time early on establishing expectations and routines. How do you work with a partner? Who gets to hold the marker first? How do you show someone you agree with them? And what if you disagree, or only agree to a point? What does it look like when you show your thinking to a problem? What vocabulary do you need to use to explain your thinking so that others can understand you? Once we, the expectations and routines were established, I was just amazed at the conversations I listened to about math and their partnerships, the explanations I heard about how a problem was solved, and the level of confidence I saw in these second graders about the math that they were doing. More importantly, these seven and eight-year-olds were looking forward to math class, and sometimes, as you saw, even excited about it. Let Nicole talk.
So, in my fourth-grade classroom, just like Eric's second-grade classroom, we started off the year thinking about our norms, what we want our discourse to look like. We spend a lot of time in class talking about what respect looks like in different settings, and so we talked about what does respect look like in a group setting like this. And my fourth graders came up with a very thorough list of how they wanted to be treated and talk during math. And then, the illustrative materials are really designed very nicely to promote discussion across the entire lesson. So, in fourth grade, our first, the lesson starts with some sort of math warm-up, which is talk around number sense, how to do mental math flexibly, different strategies that you might use. We have problems that are which one doesn't belong, which they really enjoy because none of them belong, and so they enjoy being able to talk about why their one in particular doesn't. From there, the illustrative program usually has some sort of real-world problem. And, as was mentioned earlier, it's not, I sit there and walk through the whole problem with them, which is how math instruction used to go. Now, I put the problem on the board. I send them off to their working surfaces that are all vertical around the classroom, and they work their way through it. We then have a chance to do things like gallery walks, where we'll walk around and look at each other's work, and then come back together and have a discussion of what did we see? What worked? What was the most efficient strategy? And so, the level of discourse in math in my classroom has really skyrocketed this year with the illustrative materials.
Okay, that's me. So, helping students learn math can be a community effort. Communication, engagement with families about the math they are learning fosters student success. There are two options within the materials to use to communicate with families. There's a family letter that can be printed or shared on Parent Square, and there's a family video, which can also be shared on Parent Square. The letters and videos, they're available for each unit, and they give an overview of the concepts being taught. I found the videos especially helpful, as they not only share what the students will be learning in the unit, but they also show how they will be learning it. I had a parent at conferences share a gratitude with me about one of the videos. She wanted to help her daughter at home with subtraction, but she didn't want to confuse her with like the algorithm that we all learned, and didn't really understand the new math that we were teaching them. The video, which was cool, it broke down visually how the students were going to be learning the concept and what vocabulary they'd be using. So, words like decompose and place value, that sort of thing, which she shared was just a huge help for her. So, she was able to talk about and help the, the math with her daughter. The math that her daughter was learning in school, she was able to help at home, using the same, the same vocabulary, the same strategies that we were teaching in class, which was very helpful.
So, the information that Eric shared is absolutely important, because we know that family engagement really is critical to student success. It's important to all of us. So, our math team has really been thinking about how can we better support our families to support their students, just so that we see the types of success that makes students feel good about the work they're doing and makes them feel accomplished. You can see on the letters on the slide how they depict models that are used. These are the same models that students are taught in the classroom. So, when these letters go home, parents have access to this concrete, kind of step-by-step way of being able to help their child, rather than the parent sits down to try something else, and they say, "No, that's not what Mr. Dean told us to do," so the parents can be on the same page. Additionally, we're planning this fall to do some family math nights to introduce this new resource to our families, pending, of course, your approval. And we want to talk to families about the philosophy behind illustrative mathematics, because we think it's really important to how kids learn and how important productive struggle is, that having the right answer isn't really the math, and it's really the thinking part that, that counts. We want to share the resources provided in the resource as well, and we want to talk to parents about ways they can help their child at home, because I think sometimes parents become frustrated because they don't know what to do next. It's like, if they didn't understand it the first time, if you say it over the same way the second time, they're probably not going to understand it. So, we'd like to give them some tools and some thoughts about how they can support their children. And in addition, we'd like to expose them to some of the games that we use in classes, because they help support and solidify the knowledge that students have constructed, and many of them can be recreated at home pretty simply. At this time, during these math nights, we'll also be sharing information about the Dreambox learning platform. And Dreambox is a digitally, a digital program that's highly engaging for kids. It's kind of game-based, so it's right up their alley. It is, it has all the different math domains in it. Students can work on it with agency and independence. They don't need someone there to teach them how to do that. They earn prizes and awards, and they can use those things in the little store, which teachers can regulate at which times they can go shopping in the little store to decorate their little avatars and such. It also provides great learning opportunities, because teachers can assign specific tasks for students to work on, in whatever they might need, either to enrich them or to support them in an area where they might still be struggling a bit. And the other side of it is they give, it gives us data about how our students are doing and how they progress, and we want parents to understand that students will have access to it outside of school. So, it is another way that parents can help to support their children with their learning. And now, Amy and Nicole are gonna come back and tell you some more reasons why we love illustrative.
Hi, I'm nervous, so just wanted to get that out there. Math tools, or manipulatives, allows students to manipulate math visually, tactically, and allows students to deepen their learning through movement. And we know that when students are involved, and they're using their body and their hands, that they are going to learn more. By having ready-to-access tools like these in the picture, students and teachers encourage student success. Long on is the algorithm and the procedure. If you do this step, and then this step, and you write down all the steps in your notebook. Math tools have a better hands-on approach, and they're the concrete approach. A variety of hands-on tools allows for concepts to be ingrained in students and construct their math ideas, and explain their reasoning. Games, my favorite, reinforce practice and allows students to see the fun side of math, unless you're playing with me. I get very competitive. Illustrative also offers digital applets that can be made assignable for students to digitally, digitally manipulate math as well. This is excellent for fractions, number lines, graphing, and so much more. Nicole Antonelli will talk to you more about our other value, which is small groups and independence, where math tools are also widely used.
So, we know that part of good math instruction is small group instruction, where you can really target skills that particular students need. The way that used to look in the math classroom was you got the kids going with independent work, and then you called them over to your table and did work with them in groups of three, four, or five at a time. So, with illustrative, because the tasks are really rich and require a lot of student discourse and student activity in the discourse, we had to start thinking about other ways that small groups could look. And so, illustrative's teacher materials talk a lot about different ways to support kids as they are in their groups. And so, there's suggestions of how to enrich, there's suggestions of how to scaffold, there's suggestions of things you need to do for our L learners. And so, the program materials really provide a lot of ways to support kids as they are in their groups about the room. The other piece is that the activities are really designed so that there's what we call a low ceiling, a low floor, high ceiling. And so, most of the activities, all kids can get started in. And then, as the math continues to progress through the solving of the problem, it can get harder and harder as they go, and that's where the discussion starts to come in together. So, the teacher is really spending a lot of time going around strategically to kids and coaching into what they might need. And so, small groups are looking a little different in our illustrative classrooms. Turn it over to Mrs. Stoli.
Good evening. So, I just want to highlight a few things for you as a closer to the presentation. This process started a year ago, and so I really want to extend my gratitude to Dawn for leading the committee, all the teachers, the administrators. It has been a year-long process, and you can see the number of educators involved in the pilot, an incredible amount of time and resources. Pending your approval, it starts a larger process around implementation for around 2,800 students in our district, and implementation of new math program and supporting that. Looking forward to the first year and ongoing implementation as we refine that implementation year after year. So, a couple of things you heard tonight, as a workaround leader, leader, and teacher voice, very much bringing together a committee of diverse teachers from multiple grades, schools, and really taking that teacher feedback in the selection of materials to pilot, but also implement and, and feedback from the pilot process. You also heard about embedded professional learning, the importance about setting our priorities and our vision, but also that learning, that collaborative learning that was through book study, learning from each other, that shared what I like to call group IQ in a room, right, and learning from each other, and embedded, and the lifting of instruction, not only from the adoption of a math program, but additional resources and professional development. You heard a lot about our vision of a graduate, right, explicit teaching around communication. I mean, and Eric talked about like having to teach kids to how to communicate and work together, how to collaborate, how to problem-solving. And so, the work of our vision of a graduate is coming alive, and you heard that today, how this program supports those goals. You heard about authentic learning and real-world problems, right? Like, how more engaging is that to apply it to authentic learning? And this whole idea of problem-solving and constructive learning or inquiry, that's what we do in our professions. That's what we do as we learn new topics as adults. So, putting students into those opportunities young provides supports for success. And our parent engagement work, which is also part of our district improvement plan, we know, you know, strong parent engagement is important, so providing tools to help parents support learning at home. So, there's just a few of the things I want to summarize, and also want to thank the committee and Dawn for leadership. As much as I had it on my calendar and wanted to come listen to the conversations, I had 100% trust in them. And, you know, I think that they've done an amazing job of going through a real, pretty rigorous process of implementation, discussion, dislect the process that will benefit our learners, and move forward math achievement in Weathersfield Public Schools. So, with that, open up for some questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much, teachers, for coming today.
Don't go anywhere.
No, go anywhere. Thank you. I know it's a long day for you guys, and we do appreciate it. Any board members with questions? Dr. Wiegand-Lafave?
Thank you all very much. I'm very excited about this program. I was privileged in that my son was in one of the pilot class- I was privileged in that my son was in one of the pilot classrooms. And anecdotally, I can tell you that he started the year on a high and then by January, he was saying, "Math's just not fun anymore." So I think he really liked illustrative. And once you switched to iReady and then whatever you did in the last section, he wasn't as into it. So I think he's going to be a very happy camper if we do in fact adopt this. So one thing I like about this and talking to you, as I mention all the time up here, I teach college students. One of the problems I have with them right now is that they are so used to easy answers. You just Google it. And I think what this program does, as well as just teaching math effectively, is it builds resilience and grit. And these are things that we need to instill in our students because not everything does have an easy answer that you can Google. I just want to ask two things. We spoke about this in the subcommittee meeting, but I just kind of want to get them on record now that we're in budget season as well. One is that my sense is, and you can tell me if this is correct, is that nobody who took part in this pilot regrets the disappearance of GoMath. That you are much, much happier with the new option that you have found. Okay, that's number one. And number two, can you also confirm that although price was not a major factor in deciding which of these projects, sorry, which of these programs to pilot, that they were in fact all comparable in price?
Correct.
So there is not a cost differential in choosing a particular program?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? John, Mr. Cassio, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. It's good to see you all. And I'm sure you had a busy day. I just, I'm excited with the change. And I'm excited that everyone stepped up to be a part of this committee with your schedule and the demands on the classroom, but also, you know, you do have a personal life as well, so I hope you do go home. The question I had seems to mirror Dr. Lafave over there and the reluctance. And it sounds like there's, you know, you know, change is difficult for people, but a lot of you that were involved with it see it a little bit more exciting. So I know that, are we going to be ready district-wide to roll this out? Are the teachers ready to start their lesson planning? Are they ready to see it all happen? Those are the questions. I think what I'm seeing is yes. I think it's one of those positive things.
I would say they are ready to learn what it is that we're using because I've kind of kept it under wraps a little bit. They're excited for your approval. We did announce in the Stillman letter last month that pending your approval, we would be moving forward with illustrative. So everybody's kind of chomping at the bit to get some more information. We do have plans to give people and all teachers an overview of the materials. But throughout this entire year, our math team has been working with teachers in K-6 on some of the practices that they've been learning about through that building thinking classrooms, book study, and through the illustrative work. Both of the materials that we piloted valued a lot of the same things in discourse and things like that. So those things, we did some professional learning on this year and we're already seeing them in classrooms that are not pilot classrooms. So in that respect, yes, they are ready. There is a lot of work still to be done in launching seven grade levels of a new material. So we have plans for summer professional development opportunities. We have plans to nail down dates to get people started and trained and ready to use everything.
It's ambitious.
It is.
It's very, very exciting and, you know, it's exciting to be a part of it. So good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Drew?
One, I want to say thank you to all of you. I really appreciate all the hard work that you do. I was also at the subcommittee as well, so this is my second presentation. So I just wanted to say, one, I'm really excited that you're going to be also implementing the DreamBox. I think that is a really great program to add. My daughter loves Lexia and I feel like it's going to be the math Lexia. So I really appreciate that. And then I'm also excited that you'll be implementing a family component. My oldest, I attempted to help her with math at one point in time and she rolled her eyes and she was like, "Ugh, classic algorithm." And at that point, I was like, "I can't help it. I'm sorry." So I really appreciate you at least giving videos and showing us old people how to help with math. So thank you.
Ms. Granato?
Well, first, thank you. Thank you very much. You seem like taking a college class, though. I mean, you really get in-depth into all of the math that you didn't get in-depth on before. But I had a couple of things. Can someone just explain the structure of a lesson for me? All I could think of was Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop because it would be a mini lesson in small groups, but then I wasn't seeing that.
It's actually very different from what you would consider a traditional workshop structure. Melissa kind of captured it. It's kind of flipped on its head. So it starts with a warm-up to activate prior knowledge, but then kids are sent off to solve a problem in small groups and partnerships without initial, like, here's what you, how you have to do it instructions. So there isn't a mini lesson in, here's, this is a problem I'm going to give you to solve. This is how I want you to solve it. Go do it. It's how can you figure out how to attack this problem? Which is what good problem solvers do, right? So we're working with training kids to be able to attack problems from as early as kindergarten. They do a couple of, couple of problems initially in their small groups. They come back, they talk about all the different strategies that they used. Then they get a new problem, usually a more complex, richer problem, to go back into their groups and tackle that. Then they come back together as a whole group and synthesize their learning. At that point, the teacher kind of walks through the strategies. While kids are working, they've been walking around checking in on those small groups, like Nicole talked about, and checking to see who's using what strategies so that they can strategically during that synthesis conversation, call on kids who have used strategies or made mistakes that will move the math learning forward in the whole group discussion. They model the student's strategies or have the students hold up and model their strategies. They discuss them in the whole group. And then they synthesize the learning and say, "Okay, so this is what we learned." They model the process or the processes. And that way, students have multiple strategies to pull from. Usually they name them for the student. But it's a workshop, but it's inverted.
It is, yes. I have to tell you, I'm in awe of it. And the other piece of it that I absolutely adore is that the students are up and around and they're talking. You know, I've always said, children need to communicate. That's one, that's the gift of being a human being is to be able to be a conversationalist. And, you know, to sit silently in a classroom is not going to make them who we want them to be. And then to problem-solve with each other. But here's my question. I am going to ask it. I can't believe it's coming out of me. Later in the year, we're going to be seeing test scores up there. So what's the correlation between the two? Because this is what I love. I don't like bubbling in answers.
With any new program or initiative, I always give the caveat warning that you can expect in the first year of implementation usually to see a dip in achievement because of getting used to things. I will tell you, anecdotally, we didn't see much difference in achievement data, GoMath classroom achievement to illustrative classroom achievement in this pilot situation, right? Where everybody's learning to use it new or in the iReady material use. We saw a huge difference anecdotally in student discourse and behavior between the two programs, between the three programs, I should say. But in achievement, we didn't see a massive difference, which gives me hope that we won't see a massive dip in year one. And from districts who have switched from GoMath-like materials to illustrative, I have heard from a number of districts, one of which we were able to go and see recently, that they saw a pretty quick jump in their achievement scores.
Okay. And I have to tell you, I would prefer to go for something like this and then say, you know, "We'll get there. We will." And the students are going to learn so much this way. Even, I can relate it to this job fair today because you talk to these people who are looking for our students and this is what they're looking for. They're looking for people who can communicate and people who can problem-solve. So I think we're right on the right path. And thank you all very much. Just a lot of work you did.
Any other board members? Mr. Riley?
Thank you so much for this effort. It seems like it's a lot more interactive for both students and teachers. And the concept of students learning from students is something new for me. So I'm sure it's going to work out well. And, you know, lastly, I think math in general, a lot of people are very apprehensive about it. So I think this is, this is a great approach. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
And kind of what Jim was saying, first of all, thank you very much. I'm well aware of how much work this was and I just commend you for taking it on. One of, I know any teacher's big goal among all the other goals is to create an atmosphere that is non-threatening and safe. And I see this program as really promoting that. And you, at least in my experience, my own experience, you have those students here and there who tries to hide and even when it comes to extra help, it's like just shut down, like, "No, I know I can't." And I just, I see this as being an opportunity for that type of student also to let down their defenses and be open to being, being able to learn this. So this is really fantastic. And I just think that that safe atmosphere is so crucial and it's the thing that really stuck out to me. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Anyone else? So I have a different lens because I've actually taught IAM for three years. As a sixth-grade teacher and you guys did a great job. You did it justice. And you guys definitely painted a great picture of what it is. So I hope you enjoyed as much as I did when I taught it. But thank you so much for coming tonight. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Hugel, I believe we have another motion coming from you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Another great presentation by our group. I'm going to motion to approve the AP Environmental Science textbook, Environment, The Science Behind the Stories, by publisher Withgard and Laprasada, I believe, 2021.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Any comments, discussions?
There's a number of our committee people were there, examined the book, thought it was very robust and sharp. And that was my read of it, for what it's worth, as an amateur reviewer of environmental books, which I normally don't do in my off time. So does anyone else have a comment?
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Granato.
It's nice pictures of whales in there. I kind of like that. That kind of was nice. I remember that part. But go ahead.
Just one question, and I love Student Improvement Services and I used to ask this question all the time. Any alternative to a textbook? Because they're so expensive, aren't they?
Especially our AP textbooks. So most AP classes do have recommended lists of textbooks. They use them as a really core resource. You'll see from our process, we very seldomly bring forward textbooks. One of the exceptions is AP. It has a pretty rigorous curriculum outline and they give us a kind of a list of books to select from and we can select within those aligned books. And they are college, they're first-year college courses and they are the same price as first-year college books. So I would highly recommend that this course does have a textbook as a core resource for the class, given the rigor and the speed of the class. So.
Thank you.
You need a hand truck to carry it around, too.
Any other questions? Seeing none, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And Ms. Drew, I believe you have a motion for us.
Let's all sit down.
I do. Hold on. All right. I move that the contract of employment of ID numbers 906475, 906676, 906681, 906666, 906823, 906683, 906812, 906828, 906721, 906339, 906799, 906673, 906678, 906567, 906682, 906834, 906548, 906818, 906373, 905796, 906546, 906533, 905266, 906693, 906433, 906513, 904185, 906679, 906878, 906813, 906602, 906716, 906691, 906541, 905558, 906816, 906536, 906545, 906687, 906805, 906734, 906601, 906147, 906606, 9066804, 906675, 906706, 906529, 906891, 906854, 906641, 906822, 906890, 906825, 906623, 906684, 906811, 906836, 906794, 906449, 906837, 906674, 906841, 906817, 906711, 906831, 906715, 906609, 906806, and 906677, non-tenured teachers not be renewed for the following school year upon expiration at the end of the 22-23 school year and that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Emmett, did I count right? There's 59 people?
That's correct.
Yes. Do you want to add anything?
I discussed it already during communications this evening. Obviously, this is not something we like to do. It's something we do as a protection to the board in the event that council reduces the budget significantly. I am hopeful that we get an allocation that is what we need so that we can rescind these non-renewal notices.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Moving on to report and discussion items. Members of the board, please check the yellow calendar. If you have a committee meeting coming up and you can't make it, let your committee chair know. Meetings held. The Memorial Day Parade on 4/12/23. Mr. Cassio?
Yes, it's going to be here, like, like Emmett said, May's going to come and go quickly. The parade is scheduled for Saturday, May 27th. Kickoff, 8:00 AM at the Motor Vehicle Department. In the event of rain, we are going to be at the Weatherspoon High School auditorium. There have been wonderful essay contests submitted, letters. Today's essay is honoring the greatest generation.
You know, we're not going to eliminate it altogether, but we're just going to take a pause at this point. So just wanted people to be aware that it's out of courtesy and respect and it's not to diminish the parade. The other, I'd like to just give a quick shout-out to Charlene Walsh, who has been instrumental behind the scenes in gathering the essays and trying to corrugate all the different things up in the air. Sally Distoli, the eighth-grade social studies team at the Silassey Middle School, Emerson Williams and Corpus Christi, as well as the parade committee. So it's, you know, it's a little bit different. I think it's going to be well-respected and well-attended. And the fact that we are looking within our community and honoring the greatest generation is the theme, as well as the, we're looking at all World War II vets within our community of Weatherfield to be a part of the grand marshal.
Thank you. Moving on, Weatherfield Early Childhood Collaborative on 4/17/23 and the CREC Council on 4/19/23. Ms. Granado, they're both yours. You can have the floor.
Okay. All right. WEC is Weatherfield's early childhood collaborative and we had a meeting on Monday, April 17th at the Webb Pre-K Center. The mission of WEC is that all Weatherfield children, birth to eight, are healthy, developmentally successful learners and connected to the community. The committee was led by Liz Friedus, Weatherfield Public School Supervisor of Special Education Services, in a tour of the pre-K classrooms at the Webb School. WEC and our special ed department are working to reach out to all families to communicate the available screening and pre-K programs in town. Early intervention programs are for three-to-five-year-olds with 15 students per class. That includes a peer modeling setup. If a Weatherfield preschooler does not get into these programs, which are lottery-based, WEC is ready to guide parents to other programs and even to scholarships that are available. There is a birth-to-three screening that allows our Weatherfield Public School staff to assess every student's, every child's development. These are monthly screenings that are advertised and parents can check the Weatherfield Public School or WEC website for more information. Parents are also encouraged to use the Sparkle app, which is a tool for parents to monitor their preschoolers' developmental stages at home. And Weatherfield Public School discusses the benefits of all children attending preschool and we have been hoping for universal pre-K, but while waiting for a full-day pre-K, Weatherfield Public School could use more space at Webb for this program. We made technology, we've introduced technology for our early learners with iPads, a valuable learning tool for all grades. And in pre-K, there is much emphasis on social and emotional learning and the staff pursues all grant opportunities to provide enriching programs for our youngest learners. As in many areas of education, staffing is a problem. We are fortunate this year to have highly qualified teachers in our pre-K program. And Jim Welch, our WEC coordinator, will be leaving to pursue an amazing opportunity, but Jim will continue to volunteer and participate in meetings and events. But once in WEC, it's so hard to say goodbye. Congratulations, Jim. And please use the WEC website for any other details you might want on pre-K. Also, CREC Council had a meeting on Wednesday, April 19th. The CREC Council is the Capital Region Education Council, which Weatherfield is a member along with 35 others surrounding towns. The Council's responsible for regional magnet schools and Project Choice. They've also organized and run the Hartford Head Start. Executive Director Greg Florio spoke to changes in executive decision-making with the more efficient practices that will be implemented next year. There was a leadership conference with CREC High School juniors taking on roles and responsibilities. This gives the students an opportunity to come together to lead. And the teacher residency program is in its fifth year and student teachers and graduate student teachers have an opportunity to come together now to discuss the issues facing the residency program. The Connecticut Teachers Exams is one of those issues. They are very challenging and there is often much discussion on how to be a successful test taker to become a Connecticut teacher. The CREC Annual Meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 17th at the CREC headquarters. It's an in-person meeting and all counselors and superintendents are invited. And the council chair, Lydia Tadone, spoke of the importance of communicating CREC's works to our districts and the importance of attending professional conferences. Always my favorite, the legislative update was on the state budget that is before our General Assembly. The Bill 5003, which is for $150 million, is an appropriation of $3 million also for the teacher residency program. Those are two of the most important bills for education and for CREC in particular. The state budget is to be passed by June 7th. The meeting concluded with members from CREC towns discussing the status of their own town budgets and it was a most interesting conversation. I heard the many different setups to getting budgets passed and I spoke of the continuing process in Weatherfield with the budget for education by May 15th. And any questions here, please refer to the CREC website for info. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granado. The townwide budget meeting was on 4/17/23. Student Programs and Services, 4/18/23. Mr. Healy, was there anything else on your agenda besides tonight's?
Aside from the, thank you, Mr. Chairman, except for the two issues that we dispensed with, representatives from Hamner, Emerson Williams and Charles Wright School presented some progress report on some of their ongoing programs at each school to obviously make sure we're fully engaged there. I've got a copy available and wants to see it or I'll have it sent to you if you want to see it. But it, there's, the details are in there, but it is programmatic and instructive methods of instructions, equity teams and all this other, a lot of other details they're more than happy to look at. But other than that, that was it. There was no action taken on those presentations, but we appreciate them anyway.
Thank you. Finance and Operations Committee, 4/25/23. Ms. Drew.
We met this evening before this meeting. We are currently $32,652 under budget. We discussed the townwide budget meeting and we appreciated everybody who attended. And then also, as Mr. Emmett said, there are two bids so that we will be opening those for construction services and hope to have something to you shortly.
Thank you. Meeting schedule, there's a special Board of Education meeting tomorrow, 4/26/23 at 10:30 in the morning. There's a Human Resource Committee meeting on 4/27/23 at 6:00 p.m. The Weatherfield Early Childhood Collaborative is 5/8/23 at 4:30 p.m. The Memorial Day Parade Committee is 5/10/23. At 7:00 p.m., Student Programs and Services Committee is on 5/16/23 at 6:00 p.m. CREC Council is on 5/17/23 at 11:30 a.m. And Finance and Operations on 5/23/23 at 6:00 p.m. We have no unfinished business. Public comment? Anyone in the public question to make comment? Please step to the podium, state your name and address and you have five minutes. Public comment is closed. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor. I opposed. Abstention. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.